All right, good evening, everybody. For the record, it is Thursday, April 26, 2018, 5:15 PM. Wenatchee City Council is out of executive session. I've called the meeting to order. The first item today would be the pledge to our flag. Councilmember Poyer, would you lead us?
Yes. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Poyer. Roll call this evening. We have six council members present. Councilmember Huffaker, are you with us?
I am here.
Perfect. So we have six. And then Councilmember Huffaker via phone. First item on the agenda, the consent items, which includes this evening's agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meetings.
Your honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt the consent items consisting of the agenda for this evening, the vouchers, and the minutes from our previous meetings.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt this evening's consent items. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen comment. This should be a time when any member of the audience that wish to come address the council on any item tonight, we give you three minutes and ask that you give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no takers. We have two presentations this evening, one that you have on there and one that you don't. So who's got the Poppy Days proclamation? Councilmember Kula?
Whereas the American Legion each year sponsors throughout the state of Washington a campaign for the distribution of crepe paper poppies, and whereas all proceeds from the distribution will be used for the benefit of the men and women now serving in all armed forces, needy war veterans, the orphans, and the widows of deceased veterans, and whereas this charitable drive will enable all citizens to show their gratitude to service men and women and have a part in contributing to the assistance rendered to needy and disabled war veterans and their families, now therefore I, Frank J. Coontz, mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Poppy Days in the city of Wenatchee, and I urge all citizens to support this worthy cause by wearing the poppy during this period. And witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 26th day of April, 2018, Frank J. Coontz, mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kula. Do we have someone from the Poppy Days folks? Oh, yes, we do. Perfect. How are you?
Good.
Good.
I know.
How are you?
She grew up.
Nice to see you. You want to talk first? Do you have a little something to say? Okay. And then you've got to come up and see us because we've got money for the Poppy.
Hello, my name is Peyton Ogul, and I'm excited to be representing to the American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Program as the Poppy Girl for the 2017 through 2018 year. I am 12 years old, and I attend Foothills Middle School as a sixth grader. Founded in 1919 to support the work of the American Legion, the American Legion Auxiliary is the world's largest women's patriotic service organization. The red poppy came to symbolize the bloodshed by those who died in battle to protect America's freedom. In 1923, the poppy became the official flower of the American Legion family in memory of the soldiers who fought on the battlefields during World War I. Last year, the American Legion members raised more than $5.5 million for the military, veterans, and their families. Veterans handcraft the poppies, which the mental and physical activity provides many therapeutic benefits. A veteran who makes poppies for five to six hours a day can have made 2,000 to 3,000 poppies in a week. The poppies they make are not sold but are distributed with a request that the receiver makes a donation. May is the traditional month to distribute poppies to the public. This is personally important to me because many of my family members serve to protect the freedom of America. It is also important to me because I know that veterans will be getting the donations to support them as well as their families. I would like to share the now-famous poem "In Flanders' Fields" by John McCray, written in 1915. "In Flanders' Fields, the poppies blow between the crosses row on row; that mark our place and in the sky, the larks still bravely singing fly. Scarce heard amid the guns below, we're the dead short days ago. We lived, felt dawn, saw the sunset glow, loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders' Fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe, to you from feeling hands we throw. The torch be yours to hold it high, if you break faith with us who die. We shall not sleep, though poppies grow in Flanders' Fields." On behalf of the American Legion Post Ten and American Legion Unit Ten, I would like to invite you to honor all veterans by accepting to wear the red poppy and all that it represents. Thank you.
Great. Well, come on up. We've got some donations for you if you're going to bring us poppies. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glad you're here.
I'll buy you one. I got to ask.
Can you buy me a poppy?
Sure.
I'd go back that way next.
And then I think we're going to move on with some other stuff. If you want to work the rest of the room, you can, but we'll let you.
Thank you, Steve.
I need to also.
Well, Linda's going for the hair.
I don't have anybody else to put it with.
Look at that.
I'd try that, but it wouldn't work.
Great. Thank you, ladies, for being here. Keep working the room. All right. So I have a proclamation regarding the Wenatchee Wild that I would like to read into the record if I could. Sure. So whereas the Wenatchee Wild are the 2018 BCHL Fred Page Cup champions, and whereas the Wenatchee Wild dominated the Prince George Spruce Kings in game five of the BCHL finals, laying claim to their Fred Page Cup, the first time since 1979 that the Fred Page Cup has resided in U.S. soil, whereas for the first time since 2012, the Doyle Cup will be contested between the BCHL and the AJHL, whereas the Wenatchee Wild will take on the Spruce Grove Saints in the battle for the Doyle Cup on Friday, April 27, in Wenatchee. Now therefore I, Frank Coontz, mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim April 27, 2018, as Wenatchee Wild Day, and ask all citizens to celebrate the Wenatchee Wild by wearing Wenatchee Wild clothing, and businesses to post encouraging messages on their storefronts, and for everyone to cheer on the Wenatchee Wild as they take on the Spruce Grove Saints. Let's go wild. You witness whereof, I've caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 26th day of April, 2018, Frank Coontz, mayor. I have a friendly wager with the mayor of Spruce Grove, Alberta, so we have bet a Wenatchee Wild jersey or a Spruce Saints jersey. So if they win, I have to wear a Spruce Saints jersey to city council, and if we win, then he's got to wear a Wenatchee Wild jersey as well. So we're having some fun with that.
Make sure he posts photos.
Oh, yes. He will post photos. Mayor Houston is his name, and it's funny, the city of Spruce Grove is 34,000 people, not really unlike our city, which is about 34,000 people, so.
Where is it?
Where is it?
It's in Alberta, near Edmonton, just 30 or 40 miles west of Edmonton.
Are they going to bus up there?
So it's a long ways on a bus. So we wish our Wenatchee Wild the best of luck, and there's a lot of stuff going on down around that building over the next three or four days, including the carnival and the Wild Game, so that will be a busy place. All right. Action items this evening. First item is franchise agreement regarding Sunny Slope Sewer. Steve King, or Steve Smith, you want to come up and present real quick?
Sure.
So we have been negotiating at the staff level with the Shalane County Public Works Department over a franchise agreement to work in the county right-of-way for sewer. And we're after a franchise for the entire county right-of-way. We have been struggling to work out the terms with staff, but we've got a proposal we'd like to send back to the county with terms that we would be agreeable to. And so we're asking council to authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign a proposed franchise agreement. We don't have the exact terms of that in front of you today, but we have the basic format with the terms we would accept, but we need the authority to get something back with the mayor's signature on it.
Your honor, I'd make a motion that the council authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign a franchise agreement with Shalane County to extend sanitary sewer service into the Sunny Slope area.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Poyer, to authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign a franchise agreement with Shalane County to extend sewer into the Sunny Slope area. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Next item is regarding a bank stabilization project. City engineer Gary Owen.
Good evening, mayor, council. Yeah, this item is, we had a little mishap with our sewer conveyance system to start out the year, and turns out that the PUD that our sewer force main runs through out there in Old Station, just before it comes over the Wenatchee River Bridge, was doing some design work for some of their facilities out there. They got some old pump houses. Anyways, long story short, they were willing to include the repair of our overflow that we had in January in their project this year. So we just, at staff level, worked together to get that worked out and get them a permit with the DOT, which most of this work is on, and this is a really good deal for the city to have them just take care of that for us, and the environmental and everything else associated with it. So just here to ask for you guys to authorize the mayor to sign this interlocal with the PUD. Be happy to answer any more questions.
I always like it when somebody says it's a good deal for the most part. So it means it must be, it is a good thing for the city and the people in the city, so. I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the interlocal agreement with the Shalane County PUD and authorize the mayor's signature on the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Bailey, to authorize the mayor's signature on the interlocal agreement with Shalane County PUD. Discussion?
Gary, apparently, or at least the assumption is, that somebody was messing with that gate valve that...
That's what the operation staff, Adam and his folks, that's all they could figure that had happened out there.
So in our packet here, it seems to indicate that you've got some kind of a lock or something on it now that hopefully will prevent that, somebody screwing around with that again.
He did something to lock that out so it can't be tampered with by a third party again, so.
Okay.
We're hoping we don't see this issue happen again.
Okay.
Right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Gary. Are you going to do the next one, too?
Yeah.
A little real estate purchase or some right-of-way in Old Station?
I get these things. Everybody else seems to be doing all the work. Actually, our utilities group, for the most part, worked this deal. It kind of came up when we were trying to route the sewer through the old station area associated with the Sunny Slope Extension Project. And during the course of that, looking at this one parcel where the sewer was going to run through, we've since found a better, more affordable way around. We found out that this property, number one, they were ready to develop it, and number two, they had, we'd discovered after, you know, seven years or whatever it's been since the master plan for the north end, that we had a connection that was determined to be necessary in the future for the better circulation of the old station area. So we went and worked with them. The landowner was great. We appraised the property. We came up with a preliminary plan for a future roadway connection there that you can see in your packet, and we'd really be happy to be able to secure this property because I figure in a relatively short period of time, we're going to need to be able to be making some improvements out there.
Okay. And this is being paid for out of our road fund?
I assume that this would come out of the arterial street fund at this point.
Thank you.
How much land was involved in that? The price here was 139,000, so how much do we need to have, and how should we get for that?
Oh, I'd have to look. Jeremy, do you remember?
Not off the top of my head. It was a 40-foot right-of-way thing along this line.
Yeah, I think it's in the neighborhood of a third of an acre, if I remember correctly.
I think what we paid him, Jim, was the appraised value that the appraiser set for it, and then there was a little bit, they had some costs because they had designed a building there, and they were out another $3,000 or $4,000 because they had already worked on some design stuff. So I think we reimbursed them for what they were out of and the appraised value.
Okay. There you go. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we're real happy that they worked with us so well on this. They didn't know about it probably when they bought the property, so it was a surprise to them.
All right. I would then entertain a motion if we had one.
Your honor, I move for city council to approve the purchase and sale agreement with BP Easy Street LLC and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Sparza, to approve the purchase and sale agreement BP Easy LLC and authorize the mayor's signature. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Steve King, looks like you've got a couple of economic development sorts of issues here. First regarding the Firestone parking lot.
Firestone parking lot. Good evening, mayor, council. Steve King, Economic Development Director. Back last summer, we surplus the Firestone parking lot for the purpose of trying to incentivize downtown housing. And then in October, we entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Widener Apartment Homes to, for them to do due diligence on evaluating the parking lot and whether or not they could get some downtown housing built. And they've done due diligence, and as part of their Phase One environmental assessment, used to have some service station activities on that property, so they asked us to consider doing a Phase Two, which basically the difference between a Phase One and a Phase Two is a Phase One is just asking questions about the history, researching records. Phase Two is actually drilling holes in the ground. And so we agreed that that was reasonable, given the risks associated with environmental contamination. And so that's done two things. It's added a little cost to their due diligence, and then it's also created a need to extend the feasibility period. So Widener is asking for an extension of 90 days to July 23, and then splitting the cost for the Phase Two environmental assessment. And I would just add that normally we would be doing those Phase Two assessments on our own, so that splitting the cost is a reasonable approach, and we'll get all the results of that assessment as part of this agreement.
Is my understanding that they did the drilling, and now they're just analyzing kind of what they got?
Yes. Yeah. No results yet, but.
They have done the drilling, you said?
Yes, they have done the drilling.
Do we know there's no tanks there or anything, and those have all been removed?
Right, there's no tanks. There had been tanks in the past.
Yeah.
But I think the primary concern was the service station type activities, why we call it the Firestone Lot.
Yeah.
Steve, how does the, how do you determine Phase Two? I'm just looking in general. When you pick a piece of property, is it always going to end up now with our environmental issues? We're always going to end up doing a Phase One and Phase Two with any land we work with? Or how does, what?
It really varies depending on who the purchaser is and whether they're getting financing that requires that Phase Two. So typically, when financing, when banks are involved, a Phase Two analysis is needed. So it's good to go in with the expectation, but it doesn't mean all property deals have to have a Phase Two.
If we were going to build something, do we, would do Phase Two on?
Typically, government would do Phase Two, yeah. That's the whole process we went down on the waterfront where the Hilton is, yeah.
Well, we get 50% of it paid for either way, and we get, if they decide not to, we still get all the rights to the paperwork and all that.
Exactly, yeah.
Your honor, I'd make a motion that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to Real Estate Purchase and Sale Agreement with Widener Apartment Homes for the Mission and Kitataas parking lot.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Harold, to authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the Real Estate Purchase and Sale Agreement with Widener Apartment Homes for the Mission and Kitataas parking lot. Any other discussion? We are really anxious for him to get his work done and then come back to us with cost estimates, and then we'll kind of see where things are at. So hopefully, we've got 90 days, so we'll be having some discussions between the city and Mr. Widener, I'm assuming, in the next 60 days or so, and we'll see where this goes. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is another purchase-sell agreement regarding the Federal Building LLC. Steve?
Yeah. Again, last summer, busy summer last year, we initiated a process and discussion with local telecommunications who purchased the federal building from GSA when it was surplused. And that started last summer. We entered into a memorandum of understanding in June, and then followed that up with a pre-purchase agreement in August. And so in that time period, we've been doing due diligence, a lot of discussions with local tell, to figure out how to condominiumize the building so that we could split ownership. We hired ARC architects to accomplish two things for us. One was to do a building systems evaluation, and the other is to do schematic design. Schematic designs are usually your first step in laying out spaces and doing space assessment needs. We have not completed all of the schematic design yet, although we have done the initial space assessment need, and so now we're, the next phase of the architect's work will be to refine that space assessment into actual building layouts. We have completed the building systems analysis, and actually this last Monday, we spent a full day with the engineers, architects, and maintenance folks talking about the building systems and how we can use them, what needs to be replaced, what needs to be reused. We received cost estimates for that, and basically, we're in a favorable position for moving forward. We do not have any cost beyond what was expected in terms of the $14.5 billion budget that's provided in your council packet. This purchase is 3.6 million, and it buys three of the five units totaling 46,000 square feet. The mechanical space is all common area, so local tell and the city will share that as pretty normal with any kind of condominium. Our purchase is effectively the front half of the building on the main floor. You go up the stairs, that will be City. The second floor and the third floor, local tell will retain ownership of the back half of the building where the loading docks are.
Back third of the building?
Back third, yeah.
20%, whatever it is.
Yeah. And the basement. So that's how the building be split. We're working on the condo declarations now, which is a contingency. We have to get that completed before we can close the condominium. We'll create the space to sell. And then we have a couple of agreements that'll accompany that. One will be an initial operating agreement, M&amp;O agreement, where we're looking at, in this period between now and when we actually do the construction in 2020, we're looking at having local tell continue to operate the building as they are. They're operating it very efficiently with existing tenants. And then we have a construction agreement that we're working on that will allocate who's doing what in terms of major construction improvements. So for example, an engine generator, backup generator, needs to be installed. Who will be doing that? Who will be doing the parking improvements? All of those sort of details, so that when we actually close on this project, we'll have all that secured to avoid surprises about, you know, oh, we thought you were doing that work, or, you know, this is some of the challenges with the condominium. And we're working hard, hats off to local tell for the efforts they're putting in and the folks that have been involved to determine all the details going into this project. Pretty substantial project.
So today is authorizing the purchase and sale agreement, the signing. There's closing is going to happen at a different date. We've still got to approve the cut, so there's lots of other steps before we get to a closing. Yet, you anticipate that in the next 45 days?
Yeah. End of, we're looking at the end of May for a closing date, which means the May 10 or the May 24 council meeting, there'll be a number of agreements for you guys to approve, including the condo declarations. So basically, this is just getting us committed to, you know, get the earnest money set up, but the true deciding point is when those agreements get approved, because those are the contingency factors, and they're important agreements. And so...
Did you say last June? June to June, huh? Been about a year.
June to June. Yeah.
Well, it's definitely a building that a government agency should have, just based on the looks, and it'll be nice to have other, one facility. Just the other day, I had somebody call me, says, where do I take my permit?
The big marble building, yeah.
Father-in-law. So obviously, it's confusing for a lot of people. So this will be nice. I know it's going to take a long time.
And the extra kind of $100,000, we've talked about three and a half, and the extra 100 is, we've gotten an agreement with local tell regarding the carrying costs and those sorts of things, and they've worked out a deal, so that's kind of our half of the carrying costs for the last little bit while they've owned it. We've been working with them, so. All right. I would entertain a motion if we had one.
I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign a real estate purchase and sale agreement with local tell Federal Building LLC for the purchase of proposed condominium units 1A, 2, and 3, and further negotiate terms and conditions of the sale.
Second.
And a motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Markhart, to authorize the mayor to sign a real estate purchase and sale agreement with local tell Federal Building LLC for the proposed condominium units 1A, 2, and 3, and further negotiate terms and conditions of the sale. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Right. Thank you.
Congratulations. Let's keep plugging through this thing. Moose, you coming up? Apparently, my brother coached him in baseball, and his nickname was Moose, and so I had to get that out. It had nothing to do with my figures. Jacob, we need amendment to the pedestrian crossing project.
Yes, sir. So Jacob Hyler, Engineering Services Manager. I am here today to, can you guys see that up there? Hold on. Okay. There we are. See, there we go. So I'm here today to talk about the SR 285 pedestrian crossings project. So this project has evolved a bit over the last couple of years. The city was awarded federal funding back in the very end of 2015, and Partite was brought on as our design consultant to enhance pedestrian crossings across SR 285. So the original scope included crossing improvements at Shalane and Spokane Street, at Mission and Spokane Street, and then additionally at Mission and Chehalis, right where the couple comes together. So we had, were well into design. There was a little bit of right-of-way acquisition that was necessary at the Mission and Chehalis intersection, and unfortunately, we came across an unwilling seller at that location late in the design process. So that particular intersection was abandoned from the project. And then we also, so that's the original scope of the project. The city was awarded some complete streets funding from the Transportation Improvement Board for a variety of different projects, one of those which was new sidewalk in South Shalane or South Wenatchee. So we decided to put some of that funding towards a new sidewalk on Spokane Street between Wenatchee Avenue and Mission Street. between Wenatchee Avenue and Mission Street. So after the, um, intersection was removed from the original project, it was decided that in order to maximize our grant funding and be more efficient with our design and construction of these projects, we would combine them into one. Um, so what I'm here to talk about tonight is the construction engineering funding with Partit. So the project was advertised for bids on April 17th and we planned to open May 8th. Our, uh, engineering staff time is pretty well spoken for right now between the variety of projects that we have. Since Partit was the design consultant, it makes sense for them to be, uh, the, uh, construction engineering consultant as well, um, due to their familiarity with the project. So what I'm here tonight is to ask you to authorize the mayor to execute the supplement with Partit, um, to the tune of about $69,000. We're anticipating a start date, construction date in mid-June. Uh, the project will last about two and a half months. And assuming the bids come in well, I'll probably be back next one or next council meeting to ask you to authorize the construction funding. So, um, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
What does the project entail besides bump outs and sidewalk? Are hawk signals going in?
No hawk signals, but we're doing, uh, rectangular rapid flash beacons. So, um, something you'd see, um, there at, uh, Washington and Elliott, there's a couple down by the bridge on Mar. So that.
They're, they're on demand though. Right. You press the button.
Yeah.
The lights go on.
Pedestrian actuator.
Regardless of traffic flow and, yeah.
And, uh, the bull belt that I'm looking at, is that taking up two lanes or does somebody get aggressive with their marking pen?
You're looking right here?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's correct. So there's, we add a lane at Chehalis, um, right in front of the Otomoka stand there.
Okay.
And so it's, it's a lane that's, um, that's not necessary at that particular intersection, so. If you go to a three-lane crossing, that's when you start getting into the hawk signals. A two-lane, a two-lane section works really well with an R F B.
Okay. Yeah. Okay?
All right. Yes, excuse me, the additional funding then, the 69,000, that, is that funding part of the grant? You already, or is this something that's?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, it's within the budgets and it's, it'll be, um, there's a matching factor to it, but it'll be repaid partially with, uh, state and federal funds.
Okay.
So let me back up. With the flashing signals on, on Mission, is the same going to be applied to Wenatchee Avenue?
Uh, there, there are no, there's no R F B at, at Wenatchee Avenue because we have a signal there currently. At Wenatchee Avenue and Spokane Street.
I was thinking one block south.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Jacob? Not, I would entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council to approve and authorize the mayor to execute supplemental number four with Partit Inc., providing for construction inspection services for the SR 285 pedestrian crossing improvement project, city projects numbers 1601 and SW 17-12.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Markhart, second by Councilmember Sparza, to approve the mayor's signature on supplement number four with Partit, providing for inspection services for the SR 285 pedestrian crossing improvement project, city project 1601 and SW 1712. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob. All right, so, uh, we do have a presentation tonight regarding the water comprehensive plan presentation. So we got Rob coming up and our consultant, and hopefully we're going to keep this to 20 minutes or so. I know there's a lot going on, so just kind of an update. Uh, we did the sewer comprehensive plan a couple of years ago. We've updated sewer rates, the same work is being done on our water system currently. We've got, I don't know how many miles of pipes, some of the pipes are getting older. Uh, there's talk about a replacement program, which that would entail some money. And then on top of that, there's some talk about regional water. We're quite a ways away from a regional water second source, but they're looking at some rate increases to start covering some of the replacement costs and those sorts of things. So after that, I will turn it over to, and Rob, I don't even know your title, utility director, manager, president?
Utility manager.
Okay, utility manager. And I forgot our consultant's name.
Gordon Wilson, for the record, that's.
All right, all yours, guys.
Good evening, uh, again, Rob Jammerman, utility manager. Uh, we've got Gordon Wilson with FCS Group doing the financial analysis. And over to our right is Ryan Peterson with RH2 Engineering. They're the lead consultant on the water comprehensive plan. Uh, the comp plan started, uh, in 2017. We're in the final stages of the comprehensive plan, hope to wrap it up. We will wrap it up by the end of this year, uh, hopefully sooner than later. And, uh, so, uh, we've got our two experts here to kind of walk you through this, uh, this big issue about rates and where we are on the financial, uh, system with the water, with the water system. So, um, I'm going to turn it over to Gordon to walk through.
Thank you. I'm going to move through this as, as quickly as I can here. The, as Rob mentioned, uh, RH2 has been updating the comp plan for the water system. That's occurring at the same time as, as, uh, planning for the regional water system, water supply system. And I'm hoping that we can get some feedback from you, if not tonight, then within the next few weeks. So it will guide me in writing, uh, my part of the plan, which is chapter 10, it's the financial plan that goes with the comprehensive plan. And two specific questions that I'll, that I hope you'll be looking for is, one is, what's an acceptable level of rate increases? Another is what's an acceptable level for an updated system investment fee? So we'll get to that. Just a quick overview, the existing revenues with no rate increases are a little bit above operating expenses plus debt service. So the current rates don't allow very much headroom for capital expenditures, almost none. Uh, so the, the level of future rate increases will, will drive your ability to do capital projects. There are three types of capital projects that will be, I'll be discussing. One is some non-pipe projects in the city system. Another is the pipe replacement program with the city, we'll talk quite a bit about that. And then there's a second well field, which is part of the regional supply system. Without any rate increases, that black dashed bar at the top of this, this chart, that's the revenue line. In the first few years of this forecast, there's a little bit of space there, a little bit of daylight. It's about a million dollars total over a four-year period. And after that, your, your gap is gone. You'd have to raise rates just to pay for your operating costs. So, uh, there's not much margin right now to do any kind of capital. The non-pipe projects total about 2.6 million. There's a variety of projects, condition assessments, meter replacements, meter reading system, some systems projects, utility billing and asset management software. There's land acquisition for a future reservoir, that's important. There's a pump replacement project. Um, after, we reviewed it, we pushed on those numbers and, and, uh, based on input from RH2 and the city staff, a couple of those projects were deleted or reduced. And the rest of them were assuming, that the financial plan assumes that they're a priority. They need to move forward. The pipe projects have some advantages. They are, pipe replacement programs are scalable. They can, um, they can match the resources available. You also know the need well in advance, so you can, you can plan to use cash financing, pay-as-you-go financing, so you don't have to borrow, uh, to do your pipe replacement projects. Or at least it's good not to, not to borrow for that. The city has 105 miles of pipe and roughly it would cost a little over $2 million to replace one mile. That's a big number for a lot of miles. So that's why we need to plan ahead, planning ahead is crucial to, to keeping up with your pipe system. This shows that, uh, a map of the city pipes and everything that is red or purple is, is already over 50 years old. Now that's about half of the pipes in the total city water system. So we're already there, um, in terms of needing to, to begin a replacement program. And, and just a point, uh, in this financial plan, I'm, I won't be trying to, to get us up to a sustainable level in the first year, but by the last year of the forecast, I'm hoping that you can be at a, a good sustainable level. That's a nine, nine years out. Now let me mention briefly the, the regional system. There's a second well field that is needed. It's a $50 million project. That one will require debt. We're a partner with, with East Wenatchee Water District and with, with Shalane P U D. The main benefit to us is that it provides redundant supply source. And, and we've been working with the Department of Health for, I've been told, about 15 years on this one and it's, uh, it's a serious concern of theirs. And it also allows future growth, uh, which would mainly is a concern for the other two partners. Uh, the current schedule is that that would, that would come on or be constructed in 21, 2021, 2022. That is a, because of the extra debt service, that will push the, the, um, cost of wholesale water up significantly. Right now it's about $420 per million gallons. It would go to over $1,400 per million dollar, dollars, per million gallons. It would triple, uh, in just a few years in order to, to bite off something that big. And what that means for the city's purchased water costs, it would go from just under $600,000 to about $2 million. So it's like a very big capital project to the city, even though it, it shows up in our budget as an operating expense. It's, it really is something that kind of squeezes out everything else in its place. Now let me give you some rate increase scenarios that, so I can kind of test the tolerance here. The, the output, the question that, that, uh, is dependent on the answer, on, on the rate increases is how much pipe can be replaced by the ninth year, the last year of this forecast horizon? And, and there, uh, I've given you some, constructed some scenarios without the second well field, uh, just to give you a frame of reference. But in reality, we can't not do that. That's a, that's really important. So the, the bottom group, uh, assumes that that regional rate goes up by 60%, 50%, 40% and it goes over $1,400 by, per, per million gallons by 2021. There are two scenarios that accomplish that. One is 9% per year over the whole time horizon. The other one is, is 9.5% per year for three years and then settling into 6% per year after that. The 3 and 5 and 7% scenarios, which we had originally tested, didn't even work with the, the second well field project because it didn't meet, uh, bond coverage requirements. It's, in order to do something that big, you'd have to, to get those first three years at least, uh, of 9% to be able to accommodate it. This chart, this table shows you how much pipe could be replaced at, uh, at each of those levels. And at 9% per year, if you didn't have a second well field, you could do 1.8 miles. With the second well field, you can do 1.4 miles per year. If you do the, what I'm going to call the minimum, which is the 9.5% per year dropping down to 6%. It's equivalent to about 7.2, but it's front-loaded, so you can meet the coverage requirements. Um, you'll end up with about 8/10 of a mile per year. That's about $1.6 million. It's, it's, uh, this is what those options look like. I'm talking about 8/10 of a mile per year by the end of the forecast, not at the beginning, just by the end. Well, what does that mean for, in terms of replacement cycle? What does 8/10 of a mile per year mean? Well, it, it implies something about your, what you're thinking about, what, how long the pipe will last. Um, a, uh, the 7.2% scenario, uh, with the second well field implies 128-year replacement cycle. That's, um, plenty long. Pipe lasts a long time, but it's, you know, it doesn't last forever. So, um, that's what's implied by that. And our, and our suggested goal, after talking it over with RH2, is, is about 100 years is really a good target for a replacement cycle. It all depends by the type, on the type of pipe, but that's what we'd be aiming for. The, uh, what would be the impact on single-family customers? Well, the answer is shown here. The, uh, the first block of numbers shows the impact on a single-family average monthly charge. This is for someone with the lowest meter size and who uses seven ccs of water every month. It would increase, uh, if it's just inflation only, that's the first block of numbers, uh, it would go up by about 70 or 80 cents per month every year. If you do it by nine and a half for three years and then 6% after that, then it goes up by between, you know, between a $1.15 and $2.04 per month every year. So it, it does add up. It's a, it's, it's not an easy thing, but it's just necessary in order to be able to maintain your system. Well, fortunately, you are in an enviable position right now with respect to your existing rates. You have very, very low rates. And it's partly because the, uh, you know, utilities go through waves of capital reinvestment. And, and, you know, they, they push and push and then they coast and then they push and push and coast. And you're at the end of a period of coasting. You, you need to start the pushing process. But during this part of the wave, your rates are going to be relatively low. But the other reason you have low rates is you have an advantage that a lot of these other communities don't have, which is a strong industrial commercial base. Uh, the other really low rate there is Yakima and they have that advantage too. That's an advantage that's not going away, no matter where you are in your cycle. This shows what, what your relative rates would be if your rates increased by 9% per year and everyone else only increased by 3% per year. After nine years of that, you'd still be less than the midpoint. Uh, in reality, of course, everyone else's does go up. And I, my prediction would be that nine or 10 years from now, you'd still be in the bottom three because you have that advantage of a strong commercial and industrial sector.
One real quick, just the last slide. These Wenatchee, you see there, actually we just didn't have time to update it. It's actually would be harder. You would still be below just hatchet water.
Yeah, yeah.
And the industrial users are the fruit packers and the cherry packers? They use a lot of water when they're, that's the?
Yeah.
Industry that's getting most of the water?
And they pay for it.
And they pay for it, every gallon.
Yeah, and the usage rate, um, is where a lot of your revenue comes from. About 70% of your revenue comes from the usage charges, not the, the base charge. Now let me give you just a few slides on the system investment fee. This is something that everybody pays when they, when a new building is built or when a building is upsized. And within the Wenatchee Water Service Area, you'll increasingly be seeing more redevelopment as opposed to new development because you're landlocked. And, um, but people would, would, should have to pay for that too when they put more demand on the system. The, the calculated amount, it's, uh, because all of your, um, your capital improvement program is replacements basically, um, there's, this is a buy-in charge that, uh, is based only on, on what's already in the ground. So, so if you just divide the cost of the assets that you already have divided by the present and future meter capacity equivalents, you're, you're at about $3,500 per meter capacity equivalent. So for the smallest sized meter, a 5 a and 3/4 meter, uh, they'd be paying $3,500 at that level. Currently, your, your rate is only 400. Now you can always choose a lower S I F. You can, that's within your legal right.
Standard residential house would, right now, if they said, I want to hook up to the city system, we're going to charge them 400 bucks.
Yep, and.
What you're saying is now it's going to, your analysis is 3,500?
Well, I, I do suggest it and, you know, last year, last year we had this conversation with the sewer rate and, and the calculator was about 3,500 and you ended up adopting 1,500. I, you know, you are within your rights to always go under. You can't go over.
Right.
You can't go under. But just bear in mind that whatever you don't collect from new development is paid for by ratepayers.
Right.
That's, it comes from somewhere. One other point about the system investment fee, and that is, right now it's defined with a two-tiered, uh, scaling. In other words, everything one-inch meter lower pays the $400 and everything one and a half inch meter or above pays, uh, $1,500, $50. Uh, we suggest that, that, uh, that it be scaled based on the standard meter capacity equivalents that you see in this table, uh, based on the meter size. That way, if a building goes from a one and a half inch meter to a three-inch meter, if it's redeveloped, That way, if a building goes from a 1.5-inch meter to a 3-inch meter, if it's redeveloped, right now, it wouldn't pay anything because that's all the same rate. But it should have to pay something. So the SIF, you're also, right now, at the very lowest. The $400 is way lower than anybody else. And if you were to update it to 3,576, it would be about the same as the East Wenatchee charge. Kind of puts you, puts you in the middle or the upper middle. But again, in the future, you're likely to see more redevelopment than new development. And the SIF helps recover proportionate share of those costs. So I'm going to summarize now and then I'm going to stop talking and answer any questions you might have. My suggested priorities are, number one, take care of your essential non-pipe projects, keep them on schedule. Number two, don't ignore the well, the original well field situation. You know, it's, you know, there are a lot of uncertainties about it. We don't know exactly how it's going to turn out because we're working with other jurisdictions. But we've got a plan for it and we know it'll be big. Number three is that not ignore the pipe replacement needs. Now, you can start small, but by the end of this forecast period, you ought to be up to a good replacement cycle. The ideal would be about 100 years. In the version I'm suggesting, it would be 128 years or so. But these rates will do that. The rate scenario, number four, it addresses the regional supply needs with the least impact to ratepayers. Still a lot, but it's less than 9% per year for nine years. Would be to do a little more than 9%, but then settle into 6%. Really, the first 9.5% just buys you the increase in the cost of the wholesale water. Pretty much, you have to do that just to keep buying it. But the last, the 6% per year after that is to build your pipe replacement program. That's what it buys you. For the system investment fees, I suggest that 3,500 is the fair share. You can do what you want, but that is the calculated amount. And we also recommend that the SIF be scaled using meter capacity equivalents. So, any questions?
So that preferred scenario that you had, again, that it recognizes the regional well field?
Yes.
Recognizes all of the non-pipe projects? And it begins to get us towards a 100-year?
Yeah, gets you about 128-year cycle.
And we could work to improve on that during this process?
Yeah. And there are, I should point out, there are some uncertainties in the estimates for the second well field project. And I, it's not exactly a worst-case scenario because whenever you're dealing with engineering cost estimates, there is no worst case. But it could be, end up being a little bit better than that. And if so, you could get down to 100-year replacement cycle instead of 128-year. That's close enough.
Yeah, thank you.
The second source, which we've been working on since the first day I became mayor, I'm sure it'll be longer than that. So we're seven years into it. And other than we think it's going to go down there somewhere, we are not anywhere closer to having a spot. And I know it's needed and I understand we're going to hopefully find the spot this summer and we're going to hit the mother load and we're going to come up and go, and I'm all for that. I think some of the interesting things Gordon is trying to figure out, you know, when you think of regional and where things are at, and our city system is mostly built out and a lot of the growth is going to be taking place in East Wenatchee and other places. And then the PUD's growth, you know, how much of that second well needs to, I mean, is there going to be a third, third, third? Is it going to just be based on waters or a different way of kind of calculating that? I'm hoping there's a way that calculates it that makes it so the city's contribution isn't quite as much as others just based on kind of where the system is going. But, so some of that 9.5% number scares me a little bit. Ryan?
So the, I agree with you. So the original?
Can you say that again? I didn't hear you.
Sorry, I agree with you.
Ah, thank you. It doesn't happen very often.
The current mutual contract was written in 1998. It had a very specific upgrade proposal, which was a parallel pipeline and increased capacity at East Bank. Based off the current discussions with PUD, there's a very, we've had these discussions, a very good chance that politically may not happen, which is why we're looking as well as the redundancy, reliability and benefits of going elsewhere. Because that project is essentially so much different, that contract's going to have to be renegotiated because that project was very clearly defined and the amounts of payments very clearly defined in that contract. So there will be a renegotiation of the contract. And at that point, I'm sure the discussion will come up of fair share. You know, what's the value to each party? Obviously, that hasn't been, no negotiations haven't started yet because we're not certain yet that we have the water we're hoping to find. Once we do, which we're hoping to know in about two months, then I assume that process will trickle in the play and we can discuss exactly who should pay what for that. But no, we haven't gone down that road yet. First, you're trying to find water.
That's why I said that that cost impact for the second regional well could be better. It's not that the estimated cost of the project itself would be much better, but our share of the total might end up being a little more favorable.
I'd say what we have in here is the most aggressive proposal for the city.
Yeah.
So I have a question. You said earlier that right now, we are, our rates are covering just basically operations.
Right.
How is our capital projects just for water doing, the account itself? Is it a pretty healthy account?
So water and sewer are mixed together. Our, you know, we have enough to do the little half-a-million-dollar project here, half-a-million-dollar project there, but nothing significant to the point that if we had to do a $2 million water line, we would drain the pipe pretty quick, right? Matt, I'm just?
I think we have, we've been fortunate to not spend all of that much capital over the years. So I think we have about $4 million in reserves. We could go off reserves for a little while, but we're going to, yeah, we're going to need some capital.
That's right. The number I gave you was an annual number. It didn't take into account the reserves that have been accumulated in the past. So with that $4 million, it buys you a few years, but every year, it's.
It's smaller. Well, it seems to me, and I'm going to preface my comment with saying that I love my low rates. I mean, it's one of the reasons we choose to live here, right? We have low rates on everything. Every time we have one of these presentations, we seem to be one of the lowest cities on anything. But it seems to me that we feel good about keeping our rates low, but at the same time, we are suppressing, you know, bringing in more revenue to be able to handle something major should it happen. And it's almost like a dam waiting to break if we don't do something.
And I, obviously, you look in the U.S. over the last four or five years and we've got great water. We've got clean water. It doesn't cost us much to get it where it's drink. And we have a lot of great things going for us. We have very, almost nothing for lead in our pipes, just the goosenecks in a few places. But we are in really super great shape and we have plenty of water, right? We've got water all over everywhere, we're just not sure how to.
We have the Columbia River.
Yeah, I mean, so we have a lot of things going for us. We do need to take care of our pipes. We need to build, you know, some of these things we have to do. I'm just, I'm looking at the second source and going, I'm willing to pay for the second source once we know what it is and how much, and I'm willing to bake that into my rate. Am I willing to bake that into my rate today or not? It's the only part that I'm like, oh, man, do I, once I know I'm willing to do it because I know what it's going to cost, right? And I can do the math and we can do the division and we can come up with, that's an extra 4%. Okay, well, that's got to happen. I'm just trying to make sure that the 9.5s are making me want to get a little bit ill.
So another clarifying question. You said that our pipes, most of our pipes are over 50 years old. And then we're talking about how the replacement would be 100 years. Are we changing materials here to make it from, okay. What are, what's the current material versus what would we change it to?
Ducted iron is the current standard. Ducted iron is generally considered 100-year pipe. Obviously, plus or minus based off variables with soil and contractor tear and, you know. It's considered 100-year pipe. In good conditions, you could probably get 150 years out of it. Existing pipes are primarily cast iron, which the pipe itself generally doesn't rust away particularly fast if it's good soils, but the joints eventually wear out. There are old joints that get brittle and those start leaking. The pipe itself, when it does fail, it fails pretty miserably.
Fails big.
You know, if you don't get a hole in it, you get a pipe that fractures down full length of it. You know, it's very, very brittle. It doesn't happen a lot, but, you know, it doesn't tolerate ground movement, those kind of things. Eventually, you know, it's going to start becoming an issue. And you've got some steel, and that's probably the bulk of the 10-year plan right now is to get rid of the rest of the steel pipe in your system. And there's a tiny little bit of ACE transite, what we call it, and that's also in the plan to get rid of. There was only about two years when that went in back in the 50s. And so we're looking to get rid of that as well. So we see, cast iron can last 100 years, 150. The joints generally 80 to 120 years is about where you start seeing joint failures. And we're closing in on that. And a lot of that pipe is in very difficult places to get to. You know, the red, that's, you know, a lot of the red.
Downtown streets.
I see a lot of concrete, I see a lot of concrete streets there too, by the way. That'll be a fun one.
Yeah. Does it, does it make sense to start raising those rates now so that we start putting away a cash reserve, knowing that the inevitable is going to happen to be those funds to do this? I mean, rather than wait and kick the can down the road and then have to be huge increases? It kind of makes sense that we start doing it now, to me.
That's kind of what I've, if I understand the question correctly, you're asking, does it make sense to start putting away money now in advance of the known need? That's largely what we do.
Not so much a question, it's a statement. I agree with you, we need to start doing it now so that if we wait until we have to go back to the bond market or something like that to pay for it all, we can have the rest saved that to start doing it. So if we start saving the money now and putting it out there, knowing that these things are going to have to happen, it makes more sense.
And that was one of the goals of this plan too, was to avoid financing and bond sales and having to pay the bond charges. This would allow you to pay as you go once you book that up.
So I think we need to give Gordon a little, a little bit of direction. So we've got this scale that he wants us to talk about and the system investment fee. So he needs to develop some plans. So I think he's looking for a little bit of direction here from the seven of you about what do you want his plan to be?
On the system investment fee, I think we are artificially low and we're asking our existing ratepayers to shoulder too much of the concept of growth paying for growth. So I, that, I would like to see that come up to the recommendation that you have. And I realize it has implications on construction costs, yet that's not an unheard of quantity in our community.
Can you go to the next slide, please, Gordon? Oops, I guess it was backwards then. Right there, that one.
Yeah, so it's, when you see the East Wenatchee Water District and, and we don't know if Shland PUD is adding electrical revenues to water and sewer like they do with their operational stuff. But anyway, I think that that's an equivalent. Insofar as the rate increases, we can't ignore the second well field for a variety of reasons. The redundancy, water temperature increases that are occurring because that water's also used for the hatchery program, I believe, Ryan, isn't it?
That's, that's why this idea of a second pipeline and fifth well has, was initially, I want to say shot down, but highly suspect of being able to pass through, yes. The PUD is basically, they own the land, which gives them a, basically the right to sign a building permit or not. And their opinion based off the studies is that additional draws on the, with domestic water are going to affect the temperature of the hatchery water.
Yeah, so I, we can't ignore that. And obviously, our non-pipe stuff is our, is our operations and our general technological advances as well as the equipment needs and that. So that leaves us the, the other component of pipe replacement. I, I'm always shy about, you know, 9.5 is like 10%. And that's like, yeah. And then also, let's not forget that we have a utility tax on top of that, which is the most regressive tax that we have. That, that said, you know, I think many of us have been familiar with utilities that have not taken care of their rate structure and raised their rates and take care of their systems. And they end up in deplorable conditions. And we have both an outstanding sanitary sewer program and a water program. I, I kind of like your suggestion, the 9.5 for three years, then feathered back to the 6% for the rest of that period as opposed to 9%.
Yeah, I, you know, that, that looks better.
Yeah.
But marginally, we just did a major increase on our sewer system. Yeah, 6%. Yeah. What's the number on that? It's 6. It went from three, basically went from three to six. Yeah, and we're talking 9.5 here. That, I guess I have a problem with that. I mean, it worries me. We've already made a major, major jump and then we're going to go on and go another one here. With that said, you know, I agree, you know, Mark, you know, that. I'm probably. We've kind of been at, you know, like a lot of things, we, as long as everything is running good, we kind of just sort of ignore it because it's running good. But sooner or later, it's the old Fram oil commercial, you know, you can pay me now, pay me later, kind of deal. I guess a question in terms of, I mean, you kind of look at the, the amount of dollars we would have. We've got 105 miles of pipe and at $2 million, we kind of get a mile a year kind of, kind of a deal out of this. Am I reading the numbers right here? So if we do a mile a year, we've got 55 miles. By the time we get to that 55th mile, it's got another 50 years on it. What you see in red, that one, I'm just talking about the red, red stuff on the map. Now, when we get into the other, other area, you know, another 50 years down the road, I mean, are, I'm not even sure what my question should be here. What's, what's the increase in the, in the, the risk of, of the system at this point in pushing it out? I mean, it's not like we're going to generate $50 million. We're going to out and replace 50 miles of pipe here in the next couple of years. It's going to take us a long time. But then there, to me, I see an increased risk in the system and I'm not an engineer, so.
I just, I just had an idea that might help with this dilemma that you're feeling. The 6% per year, which is the same rate you adopted last year for the sewer, that largely, especially after the first three years, is to build your pipe replacement program. That's, that's what that does. It's the first three years that, that are driven by the second well field. There still are some uncertainties about the second well field, as the mayor pointed out. One thing you could do, and I can write this into the report, I can give you two scenarios, one of which is 6% per year and the other is 9.5, then 6% per year. The other one, we do if you need it. The thing about the second well field is you'll know when it comes. When that rate, if that rate goes up to $1,400 per million gallons or whatever, you're going to say, oh, well. Best laid plans, we have to raise our rates because you really will have to in order to meet your bond coverage. But you don't have to plan for it if you don't, if it doesn't materialize. But you still want to be on a path to get your, your pipe replacement program. So I can give you two scenarios. Would that help?
I would like that. I would like the scenario that says, I'm guessing it's going to say 6%. When you decide to do well replacement and second source, then you're going to go 9.5 for probably three years, maybe four, depending, maybe whatever it is, or, and then it'll drop back down. Sure. I'd like that. And then, you know, with respect to Councilmember Kulos's on the system investment fee, I get it. But we, I also want to make sure that we're trying to incentivize builders to build. And I'm a little nervous getting to the big number. I'd like to see that get split in half, closer to the PUD number of 2,200, 2,300. That's just a personal preference of mine. It's got to go up, 400 isn't enough, but I'm a little nervous getting to the 3,500 number.
I echo that comment.
Yeah. Can you go back to that slide, Gordon?
Sure can.
How about somewhere around 2,400 or 2,500?
Where are we at on apartments, as far as that water usage? How does that work?
It'd be based off meter size, if you agree to adopt a capacity--
Yes, and we're going to adopt the capacity.
And that depends on how many units. You know, you might see a, a one-inch meter might serve five to ten units.
So do we charge more for, because it's four units?
It charges--
Off the meter.
Off the meter size.
Right.
One-inch meter would be two and a half times the, whatever the E was.
Correct.
So there is a charge. Downtown would probably be a four or six, or probably a four-inch meter.
So if you add a twenty-five hundred dollar, that'd be twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-five, which would be sixty-two thousand five hundred, if I'm doing that right?
Yeah. That's, for larger meter sizes, it would be a bigger increase. You're right, if we scale it up appropriately.
Yeah, well, that's the part that scares me, because it's the idea is we need single family, we need--
Yeah, but, but, but what you're saying, though, is that the existing ratepayers are going to pay someone else's share.
Right.
An apartment building with--
And, you know, consistently, our, our, our position has been growth pays for growth. That we don't ask existing ratepayers to subsidize, the ratepayers who've already bought into the system, to subsidize, to a large extent, to a large extent, new development.
And I, I agree with that mostly, except when we have a housing crisis and we're trying to incentivize housing.
We could get rid of all the fees for that.
Yeah, I know, but I just--
I mean, there's a lot of reasons why there's a housing crisis, and it isn't, it isn't just all of this. It's how many houses are being built?
I, I agree, but I, there's still a certain message that-- Well, let's give Gordon, so are we okay on the six, 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 and push, push in for the other stuff? What do you guys want to do here? Gordon?
I'd like to see it somewhere in the, what was it, twenty-four hundred, we said?
Twenty-four hundred.
Jim, what do you think?
Yeah, 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 that, the thirty-five's a little rich for me.
Yeah.
Michael?
I'd like to be right under East Wenatchee, so I'd like, I'd like three thousand. Well, it's something when people move in.
I can't see the chart, but the, the, the six, six, six sounds okay with me, kind of keep it on an even amount, instead of growing real big for a while.
Did you give an amount, Keith? Did you say an amount?
I think he was talking about the percentage increases.
Percentage increases, yeah, six percent.
Six, six, six.
Six, six percent, six percent.
That would be one of my scenarios. Young will be in the nine and a half.
So why don't, why don't you, let's, let's, we'll, we'll split the difference. Do twenty, like twenty-seven hundred or twenty-seven fifty on the investment fee. Do the sixes across the board, put in the nine and a halves when we think we're going to get it, or whatever you need to do to make that happen.
If I might add, one other thing you might consider, in my previous experience with rate increases for sys, system connection charges, when you had large increases like this, one thing that made it a little more palatable was to bring it in in phases. So instead of pulling the bandage off all at once, you might say, we're going to phase these in over a, a two- or a three-year period, allowing, what you don't want to do is have people that are prepared to develop, and then all of a sudden, they're facing this new connection charger. I mean, that would be what you'd want to avoid. So, we ought, we've had often done that to help, to sort of say, hey, this, in X years we wanted, this is where we want to be, but we're going to go ahead and bring it in.
So you're thinking four, five, six-year phase-in sort of deal?
Two or three.
Well, probably.
I, I was thinking five years on the full thirty-five seventy-six.
That's what I was thinking. So my thought was, let's just go, let's just do a five-year phase-in and get it to thirty-five hundred and kind of divide--
And whatever that escalator would be, depending on the IPD.
The, the other typical thing on connection charges would be that about every two years, you would go back and reanalyze, where you take the value of your plant and your connection charges, and that would be adjusted about every other year, because as we're building our, as we're building new pipe install, we're increasing the value of the plant, so that, that water plant value is increasing--
Right.
--the shares that people are owned. So you want to also do that on about every other year.
We don't like dealing with utilities, so I don't want this stuff every other year. Come on, once every eight, let me know what's going on, yeah.
So I've, I've heard another, another idea out there, which is to phase in, phase in the full thirty-five seventy-six over a five-year period, plus, plus inflation.
That was just something I suggested.
Okay, plus inflation on that amount.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, um, I echo what my council employer was talking about. So we adopted multifamily tax exemption to allow some multifamilies to have property tax exemption. So these kind of things, if there's, I know we talked about with the sewer, if there's a way to, to give some credit to our department, I think that would be consistent with the general fund subsidies on the multifamily.
I guess-- Didn't we, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
No, please.
Uh, didn't, trying to think back, but didn't we do some kind of a phase thing on, on the sewer? When we did the sewer thing, there was, on the, on the hookup--
We only did because we were going to do it right away, we were going to do a four and then a six, and that was going to be ten, so we kicked it down the path a bit. So we did six, and then we just added a year to the end of the sixes before it dropped to four and a half or three. So, and then on the hookups, we've, we've kind of moved our numbers around. I think they got a little bit lower, trying to incentivize developers to try to hook up and kind of get going. So, I, I, I would, Gordon, I'd bake that in to your program. We can always adjust the hookup fees if there's a reason to do it, you know, as a council. But I think for the comp plan, and for, you know, planning our rates going forward, I think the sixes with the jumps is where we need to go, and then, yeah, bake that thing in, but I, I like that over time, so that the developers can, can kind of plan for that.
Yeah, I can do that. Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. Thanks for all your work.
Is it, is it possible to get that presentation emailed, and you'll have to review it later?
Yeah, 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 we'll get it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to ask it. Send that to us, because there's some things I want to--
So Allison, can you just send to all the council members, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor's Report, it's apple blossom.
Yay!
Yeah, so I've been, did the chief for a day thing today, did standing against racism speech this morning, there's lots of stuff next week, so I really don't have anything else that we haven't talked about in exec session or anything else. Council committees?
We had a, had a great economic forum yesterday, out at the tech center. Had, I think, about a hundred, maybe a hundred and fifty people out there, and very successful.
Okay. And I know some of us attended the Guata thing last week, that was great. We had a chance to do that, there were some really smart, bright people, and actually got a few business leads out of that, so.
I will be one of the cast of hundreds since it's apple blossom, in the Cakes for College funnel, funnel booth.
Okay.
If you want to come and have a funnel cake, Monday, Thursday, Friday, two to four, we'll be glad to take your money.
Okay.
And I'll dress it nice for you with clean hands.
I was there at lunch today, and the queen and the two princesses were just knocking down a funnel cake.
Aww!
It was so cute, they were just pounding--
They were so great. They're doing a great job.
All right, anything else for the good of the order?
For those of you who follow the ACH, Linda Evans Parlat, team, we, Schlande, was